Good evening and thank you for attending the September 27th, 2021 meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting on the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on our district link, then select Board of Education, and then Board Doc's Agenda and select this meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.02. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman, here. Mrs. Davidson, here. Mr. Vlada?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Moving on to Agenda Item 2, would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Moving on to Agenda Item 3, district highlights and recognitions. There are none this evening. So Agenda Item 4, Board Meeting Minutes. Agenda Item 4.01, to approve. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13th, 2021 board meeting as presented?
Second.
Any corrections, revisions? Okay, Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Vlada?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, Reports. We have one report this evening, Agenda Item 5.01. Na'vi Elementary School and Middle School, updated. Dr. Ebrich, would you please comment and share with us?
Thank you, President Bell, Vice President, Mr. Baker, Chairman Marshall, Deputy Superintendent Herschizer. Want to bring them back to you. We were here a couple of weeks ago and I shared different components of the name the schools contest. I don't know that it's a contest so much as just an opportunity for them to get input. And as you can see, just to review again, different ways in which we've had naming conventions between elementary and middle schools. We've had to do some adjustments here because the board wanted us to come back this week and have some perfect conversations. So we will be right now, as it is right now, we're anticipating engaging our families in a thought exchange specific to the math doc and color scheme. We really want to get the names of the schools established first. Sometimes the iteration comes into play with that. So we'll just kind of keep moving that timeline, whatever the board chooses for us to do. But I just want to come back publicly to indicate that slight change. So with that, you know, our community is very much in tune with what we do and very much, you know, they provide input. And between last meeting and this meeting, I just want to add in red there, you'll see a new name that's coming to play. And there's been more interest. Now, that name Minerva France was initially introduced in the thought exchange, but yet from a ratings standpoint, did not come up as the other five did. But in the last couple of weeks, we've gotten more input, more people expressed interest in the name Minerva France. Last time we were together, we talked through a bit about Morrison, Angelo, Wheatley, Hughes, and Dunbar. And the Minerva France is a person that actually was from the Westerville community. I know last time we were together, the question was, is anyone from Westerville on that list? There was one person from Ohio and from Lorraine that we mentioned. But Minerva France actually was a resident here in Westerville. And you can see, there is no association between Minerva France and Minerva Park, at least that I'm aware of in what I've read. The information that you can see there on Minerva France came directly from the Westville Public Library. And a person who very much was into library science and went on and actually, at the age of 17 earned that degree, very impressive, and then went on and continued. And there's actually a picture of Minerva France in front of Pembroke Elementary in a school photo, which is really cool to see back in the day. So I just want to bring that need forward to you. And also keep in mind, Minerva Park Middle School continues to be the one that I continue to hear and resonates within the community. Obviously, that comes down to the board's decision on that. But I think you all wanted to have a little discussion about this, and that's where we are.
Thank you. I am particularly interested in the Minerva France option. Because I personally was not aware of her and her connection and ties to the Westerville community. Being a student of Westerville schools, going on to be the first black female. To get a Master of Library Science and coming from Westerville, I think is compelling. Also very, a source of great inspiration for young students, particularly students of color, but not only students of color. And I'm really interested in, I really like that option. I think it would be a tremendous honor for us to be able to name a building after her. Her impact, I think we could say is very similar to that of Winemyn Faust, who also was a Westerville student, a Westerville graduate, that went on to make significant contributions in the area of education. So I very much appreciate hearing her story for that change my opinion on where I would lean once I learned her story.
I imagine the Minerva France taking part in college credit plus courses if they don't have that.
Quite a few.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, they're very large.
I just wanted to add that the government brought this option and highlighted it again for us because I think Westerville's a community that loves its libraries, right? And to honor this woman who is such a pioneer in library science seems like a great opportunity. We'd not be too confused by the two minorities down there in Minerva Park. We ended up with a Minerva France Elementary and Minerva Park Middle School. But I think this is the opportunity to bring someone forward who isn't known and who makes them known in our community is really valuable.
Sometimes I think it's weird, just coincidence, sometimes to be in a Minerva France and a Minerva Park and have all that came about. Greatness.
And there is no, there is no connection there that you know of, right?
I'm aware of and I have other opinions on that.
Just really.
But that doesn't mean that someone won't go the next two weeks.
Sure.
But I'd rather leave it in the background because I've not seen it.
Yeah. President Bell, can we revisit a thought exchange with her name added in? Like, I'm not going to promote, I'm going to ask. Could we revisit a thought exchange with Tony Morrison, Maya Angelou, and Minerva France as people of interest to us? And just kind of stay out flatly, we really didn't know her story. So we're coming back to you again, but we didn't know that story, didn't know that. What do you all think of that? I mean, I think the community would like to hear that story.
I agree with that. I think that it's a great story. I do think we need to go back to the community and get their input. My guess is they have to know how the initiative existed from the rest of us. I would love to give you that from the community as well. And if you have any other ideas or options?
Would you prefer to do a thought exchange or some type of a survey where people would? I might ask, I don't know that you want people to select. But yet at the same time, you know, the thought exchange does have ratings.
Sure.
So there's two different ways in which to go about that. Survey for input, in other words, here's the three names. And then you could have a place for additional information, you know, that they'd like to share. Or a thought exchange just opens it up a little bit more for comments, for additional, I want one of your requests of additional names of this thing. But just around those three. So maybe either one of those two mediums.
I had a conversation with Greg this afternoon about which method might be best in order to be able to capture that input from the community. And so we're still in dialogue as to what that would be. So there will be, we can't say that if the board would like, there is a way to do it. We will figure out what the best way to do that is. And we will notify members of the community electronically. So they'll be able to participate in it. And then we'll also, we'll have it on the district aware site as well. So it will be readily available for us to be able to get feedback and input from members of the community.
So are you saying that you look to the two who got the highest number of ratings in Minerva France before we're looking at additional rates? So there's Morrison, Tony Morrison, and I, Angelou, and Minerva France. Is that the only degree that you all are thinking about or you're thinking about it differently? So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as what we're thinking or asking for feedback on.
I was just focused on the screen. I don't have, if they were, how to do it and all that, but I was just focused on the screen.
One of the things that I've been thinking through this process is how the name of the school can be connected to the experience of the kids in the building, okay? And so I sort of have a fake, I guess my own little experiment about, you know, what would it look like if it was Tony Morrison and Maya Angelou, who would be Langsley Hughes, Paul Rosenbaum, and now Minerva France? How would that be tied in? I'll say I went to Markham Elementary and Elton Robert Park Elementary. And I know sort of how I perceive them as kids and how those things have entered my, the names of the buildings and those offers have entered my experience of going to the school. And in any case, same thing. So I don't want to make a bunch of work for anyone on top of what's already been put in here. But I am thinking about, you know, how we can at least imagine times, you know, are there obvious ways in which the people who are in our elementary department think, wow, Minerva France Elementary, here's what we could do with that. Or, you know, Maya Angelou Elementary, here's what we could do with that. So I don't know if you've had any of those conversations or if you've really been focused on sort of the naming and prescribing of people. I'm just curious.
Have you done any labor work in terms of how to go out and operationalize a school under those names? And I know that's how we're asking, but you're saying, how can you imagine that to look? But one name would be the staff also having collected the information, because we don't even have a staff. But at the same time, you know, I am here, I am at the board, so I'll take whatever direction you'd like.
You know, I guess I'm just sort of in the community and my fellow board members and everybody sort of put on a hat of being in that school, right? Into that name and how can that be connected to the kid's experience of going to that school? And maybe for me, I'm excited about imagining Minerva France Science, but there are elements to it that happen to be a problem. This is not a copy, this is about the test. So in any case, I'm just sort of going to ask you to just maybe put that on and try to at least begin to imagine what that would mean to be a kid or a staffer in that building.
What I would imagine doing on any survey that you put out is put more information about each person. But then there'd be a consumer of that information, so that, you know, they don't have to go out to the lecture. We'll do it for them and they can provide that input, so. I think it would help though, outside of us, although I'm a community member, to narrow down the list to maybe two or three names. And to your point, Morrison and Angelo were the top two according to the star ratings as the number of people that gave input on the first thought exchange, which as you know, were over 1,300 people. So this is the decision we take lightly, or we would have named it two weeks ago. We want to collect it, but I hear that going back to the community. And so what, your pleasure in terms of, you want to go back with three names?
Yes. I suggest we go back with three names, the top two, and add in Minerva France along with some biographical information regarding each. Would you like to hear what the community thinks?
We'll prepare a timeframe, we'll get that rolled out, make sure that everyone has an opportunity. And, you know, we'll make sure we use social media to push that out. And, you know, Greg, Greg, you and I will put that forward, okay? And then the Minerva Park Middle School, are we still, I mean, I know that it's yet to be named, but does anything need to be done to do it for the middle school?
That would be very important.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ebrich. Moving on, as we continue with our agenda to Agenda Item 6, Public Comments. There are none this evening for this section of public comments. And so moving on to Agenda Item 7, the Financials. Agenda Item 7.01, to amend the fiscal year 2022 annual appropriations.
Second. Second.
Ms. Marshall, would you please talk to us about this, please?
Yes, thank you, President Bell, members of the board. So what we have today is our updated annual appropriations for the past year, 2022. We are required under state law to have our permanent appropriations filed with the county office by September of the verbal. So these will serve as permanent appropriations. And we've found permanent updates are based on various trends and network changes that we take for temporary appropriations that were originally approved back in June.
Any questions for Ms. Marshall? Okay, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Vlada?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. That motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.02, approve the financial report and investments for August of 2021. May I please have a motion and a second?
Second.
Ms. Marshall, would you please share with us about this one?
Yes, thank you very much. So this month, we're going over August 31st, month end financials. For the general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of $77.1 million. Year-to-date expenditures of $34.6 million. And a general fund unencumbered fund balance of $173.4 million. So just a reminder, August is the second month of the fiscal year. For all funds, we have year-to-date receipts of $94 million. Year-to-date expenditures of $51.4 million. And we ended with unencumbered fund balance for all the funds at $291.00.
Any questions? Members, please call the roll.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Vlada?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. That motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.03, resolution to approve the purchases in accordance with O R C 5705.41 D1 and Board Policy 6320. May I please have a motion and a second? So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Thank you again. So we have three within our purchase orders, um, the four agenda tonight. Within our purchase orders are, we have a purchase order that was in place after the invoice date. These all go into some of our construction projects. And our construction projects carry for you a year and year. So it's not clean cut of the purchase order if they finish the year because the construction projects we carry over. In one case, we did have a purchase order that was closed in error that should now have been closed. So that's why with the timing of the construction projects that we have these final purchase orders. And the money has to adjust with how the government recognizes these processes.
Any questions? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Vlada?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. That motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Personnel Consent Agenda. That is comprised of Agenda Item 8.01 through 8.10. May I please have a motion and a second? So moved. Okay, Mr. Reeves, would you please share with us about this evening's personnel consent agenda?
Yes, and thank you, good evening, President Bell, members of the board, Mr. Herschizer and Mrs. Marshall. I would like to present to you for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. The items in tonight's brief agenda mostly represent our regular action items with regard to personnel. There are a few items, however, that should be noted in tonight's agenda. We have one retirement this evening. Jason Shenfield will be retiring as an electrician specialist after joining the Westerville City Schools in 2014. Now, if we took a walk back to the 2013-2015 school year where Jason started, we had not one year, not two, not three, but five snow days that year, mostly because of a polar vortex that descended down on North America. Also that school year, on January 12th, 2015, the Ohio State Buckeye completed the Oregon Ducks 42-20 in the Cotton Bowl. So Jason started the year. You'll see a few resignations from classified substitutes, which were student workers who since graduated have gone on to bigger things. We have 15 classified and three licensed recommendations for hire for the board to consider. A lot of the classifieds sit around food services. We are hiring more staff to meet the demand of greater participation in our fleet program. We have a sizable list of supplemental contract recommendations before the board, which represent many of our veteran teachers stepping up to mentor our newest teachers in a resident educated program. And lastly, we have a slight revision to the AAS guidelines in the benefits section to account for the council support specialists that were added for this school year. And we also have a memorandum of agreement with WESL to provide administrative staff support at transportation in the event of staff shortage. Now, answer any questions the board has.
Questions for the board? Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Vlada?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. That motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Old Business. There is none for this evening. Agenda Item 10, New Business. Agenda Item 10.01, First Read of Policy 1530, Evaluation of Principals and Other Administrators. Mr. Reeves?
Wait, I got, I forgot to step in. Thank you, once again. If you recall, in 2018, Ohio adopted changes to the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, what we call OTEZ, comparable to the Ohio Principal Evaluation System, which we also call OPEZ. They changed those laws and the State Board of Education subsequently adopted a revised framework and model in 2018, referred to as OTEZ 2.0. Additionally, revised Code 3319.202 requires that school districts to evaluate principals and assistant principals using a system and procedures that are comparable to OTEZ 2.0, but tailored to the duties and responsibilities of the assistant principals and principals. Subsequently, the OPEZ system has been updated to align with OTEZ 2.0. And as a reminder, aligned with OTEZ this year, in OPEZ or principals, districts are prohibited from using student growth measures and any other high-quality student data for years particularly for school. So this is an alignment of our, and an update to our principal evaluation system.
Any questions for Mr. Reeves? Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on to Agenda Item 10.02, First Read of Policy 2271, College Credit Plus Program. Ms. Marshall?
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Bell, members of the board, members of the board, members of the board, Ms. Marshall? With the fact that there are two board policies preceding, policy 2271 is College Credit Plus. And those provisions, we've got pages on hospital 110 regarding student eligibility and administrative guidelines that speak to the social uniting of the college course content, name group, which are subject matter and materials. And students will receive that whether they're traveling from our district, but also part of the College Credit Plus application that they will go through with college.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Are you working on that?
Yep, here I am next.
This is classic athletics, and this policy update highlights that in our classic athletics can also provide an opportunity for career and education almost as well. And it is recommended that the board approve these provisions.
And what does that look like? What does that mean?
It's the idea that it's more than just training, right? That our students are student athletes and those offer training in leadership skills, other learning, more than just providing athletic development.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to Agenda Item 10.04, First Read of Policy 2370.01, Blended Learning, Revised.
Dr. Hopkins? Good evening, President Bell, members of the board, members of Herschizer, members of Marshall. I'd like to present revisions to the following two board policies. I'll take the first one, first, 2370.01, related to blended learning. This policy is being recommended for revision because it changes to the definition primarily of blended learning. It clarifies what constitutes blended learning, how a student may or should be linked through their blended learning courses, and finally, the length for blended learning programs announced. Happy to answer any questions about that one?
Questions? Here we go. Moving on.
I'll move on to policy number 5200 relating to attendance. This policy is being recommended for revision because it changes to what constitutes a reasonable excuse for timiness at school, such as called visitations, foster care homelessness, for example, how to effectively address the virtual occupancy, and finally, how the district may track remote attendance. Both of these revisions are recommended for revision.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Hopkins, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Recommended Action, Outstanding Business. Agenda Item 11.01, Donations. May I please have a motion and a second? Second. We certainly want any discussion? Questions? Okay. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the board?
Dr. Nurse Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Valerio?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. That motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item eleven point zero two, Overnight, Our State Field Trips. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Baldwin, would you please share with us about this?
Yes, good evening. This is a request by the Westerville South High School Marketing Plan to attend a, or to perform actually at Westerville World, in a parade at the Magic Kingdom, February seventeenth through twenty-second. And they have seventy-five students, approximately twenty-five chaperones, family members attending the trip. And they will be taking a charter bus to Florida.
And you want to touch briefly on the process that was involved with that back here? I think it might be helpful for people to know how much thought and consideration is given to sort of for customer approval at this point in time for the pandemic.
Yes, so the plan has taken into consideration COVID, and there is understanding that conditions should change, that the trip could be canceled, and families can revert to take on insurance policy if that were to happen to protect their funds that they look forward to the trip. And then we also have plenty of our trips come to our core team to review the trips to ensure that they are following our safety guidelines. And for this particular trip, since students will be traveling out of state, there's been requests for folks to either indicate that they have been vaccinated or submit a negative COVID test within seventy-two hours before returning to school.
Thank you.
Can you talk about the estimated cost of this to zero? So, you know, I'm assuming that boosters and boosters, that's what we call boosters, raise funds to this trip, and students probably put in some funding too. I don't know if I'll answer this question right now, but I'm just wondering for students and for whom, well, I'm wondering whether the boosters raises the fund and pays for a new student, or whether students have their self-fund, and if there's a way for students who maybe that's difficult to receive some help with the funding. So just, you don't have to answer that now, I'd be interested to know.
Sure, I can find out exactly. I know that student payments and booster payments are part of the process, but you don't know the exact combination right now.
Okay, thank you.
I propose an amendment. You said there are twenty-five chaperones. I'd like to add a twenty-sixth chaperone.
Yes, our director said that they were really excited about the opportunity, and that the van has auditioned for this opportunity too, and we're accepted. But they're really excited about it.
It's a huge honor, and that's a tremendous van, and so I'm grateful that COVID will not stand in the way.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. And Ms. Marshall, would you please call the board?
Mr. Valerio?
Yes.
Dr. Nurse Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. That motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item third, or I'm sorry, Agenda Item twelve, Public Comments, Agenda Item four point, on floor one. Just as a reminder, each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen, and Mr. Hershizer will call the time when the five minutes has elapsed. If you have information that you would like to leave with the board, you can please leave that with Mr. Hershizer, and we will receive it. And please, address your comments to the board and not to members of the audience. And with that, our first speaker for this evening is Sophia Shatt.
Hi. I'd like to ask the board a question regarding incidents of sexual assault that occurred during the Western North Homecoming events. This came to light to me and many other community members via the Instagram account called Silence of Non-Option WNHS. What preventative methods do schools and the school board implement so things like this don't happen again, and so that students feel like their safety is being valued by the school and during school events?
Honey, they don't answer your, their comments, so if you have more.
Okay. Basically, what it comes down to is that it doesn't feel like Westerville City Schools only values words of certain students. Students who report sexual misconduct, hate speech, or any other form of violence are told that nothing will likely come of their report. And when something does come of it, it's usually a vermin or words that, that's what it feels like to these students. I understand that schools are supposed to be a place of education and teaching, but it doesn't help anyone if only the students are being taught that schools don't necessarily value them. Recently, it seems like Westerville City Schools only care about helping their integrity and reputation. When a student comes to administration saying they feel unsafe around students, and for good reasons, the school sends back to them that they will use the incident at the teaching moment for the student who committed that act. When the teaching is being done, it's simply a five-day suspension. This gives the other students a feeling that if something like that were to happen to them, that Hughes will just walk scot-free after the student has to live with theater and amuse while they attend school. I know that there are rules and things in place that prevent certain things from happening, and I know that I'm not the only one of all of them. I understand that I can't just make a request here and we can't just punish all the students that we say are bad or have harmed us. I'm simply asking the Westerville School Board to be more proactive and caring when it comes to the students. Many schools have implemented an advisory class in their class schedule, so why not add a lesson about consent for equity along in those lessons? It comes down to the fact that students don't feel safe at school, and that many community members don't feel safe about sending their loved ones to school. Many people, like myself and other students, will be more than willing to set up actions and lessons to make Westerville City Schools a more proactive place. I know that things like these take time, and I know that the school board has been working on many things to help push these ideas in school already. But students are still being hurt by their peers, and they still feel that the school board isn't doing much to help them be heard. This is unacceptable and needs and changes to happen now. If students don't feel safe and are hurt in their own schools, how do you expect them to do well in school, let alone even want to attend school? Westerville City Schools values diversity and unity among students. But when that diversity is being protected, what are students supposed to do? Often, students are told that the board is working on fixing our problems, but in such, but they need to be told specifically what is being done to actually change these things. Students can be more than a class to perform well in school if they know their safety is being done. If students are just told to be on work line, that doesn't make them feel secure and safe. They need to know what actions they're being doing directly to prevent things like this from happening again, and the students need to feel safe in their school. Thank you.
Our next speaker for this evening is Tom Curry.
Good evening. My name is Tom Curry. Been president of Westerville for about eight years. I want to thank Nancy Nestor Baker for being on board, I believe, the whole time. And I'd like to thank the rest of the board for your diligence and work. I know there's a lot more time that goes into it than is represented here tonight, where you went through the agenda. And I appreciate that. I think you're doing a wonderful job, and it's trying to change times. And I just want to say, say thank you. One, that's a little bit negative comment is, I'm quite hard to hearing and getting verse, it seems like every day. So if we could do something to increase the volume in the room and make sure that my folks are just probably, my capital too. I'm not on these other things down at the bottom there, but Facebook, YouTube, and others, but, so I'm kind of verbal face-to-face and, and talk to each other. So, thank you. I understand that COVID is also impacting our ability to communicate and get close, uh, face-to-face. So, but again, thanks for all your work.
Thank you. Our next speaker for this evening is Paula Thomas.
My name is Paula Thomas. I'm a mother, and a female owner. My kids have been in the Westerville School District since, oh, wow, all my life. My son graduated last year from Westerville North, and my daughter is a junior at Westerville North. And I'm going to get very emotional. I am a survivor of sexual assault. So I was a teenager when I was four years old. I was also sexually assaulted when I was seventeen years old. I had been sexually discriminated. I had been sexually identified. We need to do better for our children, for all genders. There needs to be better communication here in the district. They are, I don't put the blame on administrators because their hands are tied, but they need to have better communication tools. This is a big deal community here this evening. I work in school nursing. I've been very affected by COVID. Our students have been very affected by COVID. U X have been very affected by it. Nobody signed up for this. I'm in healthcare, and I didn't sign up for this. Our students are having serious mental issues. There are serious, serious mental health issues going on here. I am very familiar with the situation that happened in Denmark, also with what happened in Central. There's something going on. We cannot be reactive anymore. We have to be proactive. We have to communicate. So we're having pep rallies for football games, the brothers' sporting events, and nothing against them. Like, yes, let's have a team spirit. I was a cheerleader. Hey, you know, all of that. However, we're not also having school rallies and having people coming in and talk about their experiences in this situation. I am recovered. I drank and slowly tried to kill myself because of not getting help. For years of not getting help. I hid and buried it deep inside of me when I had my first and sexual intimate experience. Everything came back. The trauma all came back. I listened last week and sobbed with those mothers. I sobbed with those students. And I heard poor students that allegedly committed the acts. And I, I'm only saying allegedly because kids do not come forward and make these statements. They just don't. It is so brave of them to come forward and to continue to go to school. And some of them ostracize. It's horrible. It is a horrible, horrible experience. I cannot tell you that at fifty-one years of age, I still go through trauma. I almost drive myself to death. Students at this age are finding thicker ways of dealing with it. Kids are repulsive. They will harm themselves. And if they are not getting the education at home, I'm not blaming the school system. I'm blaming the system and societies generally as well. We need to do better. All of us, we do better as a community. And healthy students. I am willing to come to schools and talk to students about what it's like to rise above it. But also, I am here now, chill out. You know, your daughter, maybe your daughter got it wrong. Maybe your son got it wrong. No, they didn't get it wrong. It happened. It happened. And we need to do that. We need to not point fingers. We don't need to blame. We need to fix it. We need to educate boys as well as girls. Girls shouldn't have to protect themselves. No one should have to protect themselves against somebody that does not understand what the word consent is. Will you do not consent? Somebody says no, they mean no. No one asks to be objectified. No one asks to be sexually assaulted. No one asks to be discriminated against. These are really, really tough, tough conversations that we as parents often have, but they also, we also need help, be helped in school, because judgment most of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next Agenda Item, Agenda Item thirteen, Board Comments. Would you like to give a question? Davidson?
A couple of highlights. So we do have open in the district mail, picking out Friday on our facilities. And we congratulate Scott Moore and Jethla Rose. Andrews looks amazing. South feels amazing. Kinsey took a booster group around. Active booster last week in the Torah facility, making some awareness, saving our environment. It is more than a buddy, and a Christian for that, as well as sure injury based in current elements. So I just want to highlight that with the conference. I also want to throw out congratulations to Tammy Santa, who is named High School Counselor Association twenty-twenty-one advocate of the year. Very deserving, so a big thank you there. I would also like to call out to two amazing, brave moms. They worked their last night. Corpsman Cole, I'm sorry for the pain. They never been anything experienced as a mother. I applaud your journey. I also want me to know that I see you and I hear you. I have heard over the last two weeks, more than I can count, why it's happening right now. And I told the same story I'm going to tell tonight. When I was in the Southern, you heard your stories, but it just shows what happened, that this has been happening forever. In fifth grade, so I was ten or eleven, a bunch of boys were playing football, and girls were playing volleyball. We were the tomboys, right? We were just wanting to play. And we were robbed by the boys. And after a while, we went to the principal's office. I will never forget, the principal, Wes, told him the story. We were so sad and in tears. And he got up after we spoke, and he pulled us, shut the door, and said, ladies, or should I call you loose ladies? You should not be playing football. You have no reason to be in that area. You need to go somewhere else and find something else to do. So when I say that, I think the moms that came forward last week and is what is going on is we just want better, right? We want better for our kids, all of our kids, regardless of male, female. So tonight, and my colleagues still have this, I am going to make a motion. I would like to make a motion for an external audit of our extra degree numbers through policies, processes, practices, culture, and climate, with the goal to ensure appropriate professional development. Training policies, processes, practices are replaced, or to the state of complete and comprehensive systems. Second, and again.
Motion has been made and properly made and segmented. Discussion.
Have you looked into, I'm not criticizing the motion, I'm asking for information. Have you looked into funding for this, or who you would, how, how the water would be selected and so forth?
Actually, I've not looked into funding, but I met with someone from Modern Eye. Her name is- Actually, I've not looked into funding, but I met with someone from Modern. Her name is Christine McCray. She put our school district in touch with several community for COVID. And I know Jen has done a lot of labor behind the scenes with some prevention programs. They could probably do a lot of that.
I don't have a problem with the idea. I would like to know that, but I'm not proud of the idea.
No, I think we need to get to the bottom and then to dig deeper and to do these things out there. And these folks that are coming forward are really brave and strong and we appreciate it more than, more than what you know. And I would say on behalf of your children, your students, that they're brave, courageous to be noted as well. Because they're trying to live their lives at school. And that's hard. My comments are, then I'd really appreciate Paula, you coming forward. Not only sharing your story, but maybe offering to sit with some folks. I really appreciate that. Paula and Sophia, I don't know what grades you're in and I don't know anything about that, but I thought you were very strong and convicting and obviously convicted. And we were all troubled. There's nobody up there that doesn't have a student or a cram student in our schools. And so, when we hear about incidents like this, it's more troubling than I'm able to express. Tom, thank you for your kind words. Appreciate it. I would be certainly in favor of this and I'd even suggest that Ms. Marshall, if we can figure out costs and talk to some folks this person. I really liked the ones that Jen brought forward as well through this email that we had a while ago. So, I think it's a good idea.
Regarding this case and motion, I think it's, I have some separate comments, but I'll make most of them. I think it's incredible. It's just important that we have external eyes and, you know, that's on all kinds of programs. I'm, my colleagues up there know I'm a big fan of external review because that is, we have people who have looked at programs, who did situations across other districts and, you know, who are experts in reviewing where we are and where we need to get and how to move from where we are to where we need to get. So, I think it's a good idea. So, I second the motion. I would be always for it.
I want us to carefully select who does, you know, audits can be, it's incredibly helpful. Audits can also be less than helpful and a lot of that has to do with the request of proposal that's put forward. The development of request of proposal for the auditor. I would suggest that once this motion moves forward, that the next step must be the development of the RFP as the board goes forward, working to see it. This is not something that I wish to see moving forward as something in a cycle. And if that people need to be fully involved and aware of the RFP and those who submit proposals in response to it, as we would do with any other external audit, as we have done with any other external audit.
I would say I am, I'm in agreement with the motion. It is in line with the last conversation that I had with Dr. Hello about a process moving forward to be able to deal with these types of situations as they come up in the district. And there's some information that I was requesting from the administration, who shared with the board, that this kind of a process would absolutely bring forward our consideration. So, I'm, excuse me, I'm in agreement with you. It is something that I believe is necessary and needed. One of the, one of the things that I am continually hearing from the community is a cry for transparency. And so, as we move forward with this, with a formal review process, external audit, that transparency would be a major component of how we move forward and with what the results are once, once they are obtained.
Could I recommend, could I ask, assuming this moves forward, for the executive view and board leadership? Maybe you could make this an agenda item in your next meeting, kind of discuss maybe a process and bring it back to the full board. Do some recommendations. Everything. Auditors, costs, timeline. What else do you want?
That's where we need to start.
I'd like to see us move it down the road and I think for you all too, just kind of, just okay, where are some beginning places? Are we doing RFP for this? Where are some auditors? Where are some timelines? What do we want? So, is the outcome going to be? Then you all bring it back to us and then we tell you yes, yes, no, no, yes, no.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan, Matt.
Yeah, I would see that being, being a process.
Cool. Thank you.
Any additional discussion here on the motion?
Just thank you for bringing the motion forward.
Ms. Marshall, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Nussburger?
Yes.
Yes. And with that, the motion carries. Do you have additional comments, Ms. Susan?
Just, and just one.
Who would like to go next? Ms. Altman?
Sure. You go next. So, several things, saying again to all of our speakers, this week, last week, all the communications. I, what I promised last time is to continue to ask questions and to do, like, to share a couple of things this evening. Of course, I did have one shout out to Peter Johnson at Westwood High School Junior, who started College Board's National African American Recognition Program. So, you might not want to miss that. But regarding, you know, all the many situations that we've been hearing about, I just want to share a little piece of an email message to my colleagues because it includes some information that I'm asking our district to agree on. They've started to do that, which I appreciate. So, I wrote, I'm ready to say, I think we must address the persistent culture of hazing and sexual violence in sports, which exists in Western all year and everywhere. We need to implement a district-wide hazing and sexual violence prevention program in athletics, and I would say and beyond. An evidence-based program. You know, I would like us to bring in a program that's nationally recognized that has research behind it. So, as a first step, I reached out to Dr. Juliana Nemeth of Ohio State, who's one of their experts in prevention of sexual violence. And, you know, she gave us some advice on in terms of programs that are available and willing to be a resource for the district. So, just for the board, the administration, for anyone in the community, I wanted to share these publicly. She gave a list of local organizations that engage men to prevent toxic masculinity. Ohio Health Sexual Assault Response Network, Essential Ohio, SARMCO, HelpLine Delaware County. The Ohio Domestic Violence Network does not just domestic violence work in the way that most people think that they work with young men to move in athletics. And then for evidence-based programs that we can look at, implement across the district, coaching voices and men is an evidence-based violence prevention program specifically designed for teen sports. And there's the new playbook, which is Ohio Domestic Violence Network. They offer this sports team violence prevention program. Green Dot is bystander training. So, Green Dot has used it at a number of universities, also at the high school level. I believe there's a Green Dot program also from their school. So, bystander training, of course, is what you do when you're that person standing there and you see something, right? Bystander training is incredibly important in stopping cultures of sexual violence. So, and Green Dot actually has, there's some research that's been done, it's been randomized controlled trials, which is both standard and public health research, so it's well vetted. And I'm not recommending anyone in particular of these programs, but I shared this information with our administration from someone who is an expert in this field. This is a place for us to start and certainly, you know, our Tammy Santa and her team are aware of lots of these programs and other programs. I'm just really urging us to vote an evidence-based program that has research behind it. We know it's an effective program of works. I'm also asking that we look at any of these things to supply. I know we have training, there are coaches go through, we know that our student athletes and all of our students sign protocol conduct, but we have to work to supply something like this in order to change culture. So, that's what I'm asking for and it is concluded, we must take the horrible events of recent weeks and respond to them in a way that brings positive culture, change, book the future of young people from hazing, sexual violence and trauma, and make our students' lives and relationships better. And so, in any case, wanted to share those resources with us publicly. I know there are demonstrations looking at them, so thank you for that. Couple of other things. One piece that I would like to request is that we, we talk about Tammy Santa's team a lot up here and they have enormous responsibilities with COVID and with responsibility for the social, emotional wellness of our students. So, I would like to ask if we have the ability to put additional resources towards taking some of the contact tracing responsibilities? And I know we already hired additional nurses. Mr. Chisholm, you can probably tell me exactly how many?
Two, the third one we started in sports action.
Okay. So, contact tracing is a huge job that they're undertaking and also, you know, we really need your expertise in this other work, addressing culture change, addressing the issues that we've been hearing about. So, I would like to ask us if we have additional funds to bring in someone who can coordinate that work, like a project coordinator, project manager of the contact tracing piece, to alleviate someone back from Tammy's group, right? And, you know, you're the funding guru. You know, whether it's asset funds or, I mean, this is, I think we just need to, we need to fill out that contact tracing team a little bit so that our experts in social and emotional wellness can really put their focus on this work. So, that's a request. I'd just like to see what we can do to that.
Just to support you in that, I hope you all mind if I had a hand. If you all maybe have a sense of what contact tracing all that that entails, there was a really good article in today's Dispatch and it was all about contact tracing and how convoluted and how time-absorbing it is. And this all has been mentioned to us before. You know, can we get somebody else to kind of, to kind of do it? And I've read this article, so I don't know. If you read Dispatch or go online or with your neighbor's Dispatch or something, but it's really very interesting how detailed and time-consuming that is. So, I didn't mean to, I just, I just thought that it would be helpful for people to understand what that's all about.
Thank you. It is a lot of work and this is a team, you know, probably good two partners things. We're all facing this year, COVID and then these situations that we have going on are still in that ballgame same team. So, I'm asking for some additional relief for them. And then, you know, I just also wanted to share, I have lots of policy reviews. My dress is full of policies right now. And, and so, I just encourage, you know, I can start listing policies and I encourage people to look at if you're interested in what policies are relevant to these situations and have the help figuring that out, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm sure the administrators would be happy to help with that. For those of you who don't have, I think Dr. Nussburger presented it before, with policies and then administrative guidelines underneath those. So, you know, these situations to implicate federal law, Title IX, there were changes to Title IX just within the last year or so, a little over a year ago. So, in any case, I just want, I'm not an expert in that, but if I can give you a resource for anyone, please let me know. And that is, that is probably enough for me in common. So, thank you again for speaking out and we're, we are working on it. I know some of you, some of you that it's hard for you to hear you're working on it and not know what that means. So, I'm trying to share some of what that means to them. Thank you.
And Ms. Altman?
Well, I gave my comments to the same fellow as far as, uh, the, the.
Okay. Dr. Baker?
I'll be glad, sure. Tom, I want us to take a look at what you're talking about, about volume. I have noticed that when I have watched some of our recordings online after a week, yes, volume is an issue. So, if we can take a look at how we might be able to address that, that would be a help. I very much appreciate, well, both Sophia's and Paula's comments, particularly the desire and understanding of the health of the community and the willingness to work as a community on these issues. And Paula, you said things that I think probably most people have been saying lately about there's something going on and things, things have happened that none of us, none of us believe in, none of us support. And we know that there are a number of societal issues in play. We know that COVID has damaged far more than health, physical health. And we have to really be taking work with that. I do want to, to maybe if you're interested in policy, if you go to policies on the district website, there's a search bar. You can put it anywhere you like and it will come up with any of the policies that have to do with that. You can do that for the policies and the guidelines and the forms. You can look through those at, at the and just put your word in the search bar and there it'll come. The other thing I think is important to let people know that that has been significant, massive, ongoing discussion amongst the administrative team about a thinly stretched every building, every department is now and how difficult it is for us to fill some of the positions that we know desperately need and contact tracing is in one area. But I want you to know that it isn't ignored. People are working hard, day and night, to try and keep up with the changes that have occurred socially, educationally, as a community. And they are working to keep up with the things that have not changed as well. And I don't want us to forget, as we talk about the things that we need to work on and we talk about the things that worry us and the problems that exist, I don't want us to forget all of the wonderful things that still go on on a daily basis. us to forget all of the wonderful things that still go on, on a daily basis, in our classrooms, in our buildings, with our people. There is much to look at, and it's important, as we figure out how to deal with our challenges, that we also focus on what underlies our passions for our children, for our staff and faculty, for our community, and to focus as much on building up as we focus on repair. I ask us to do that as a community.
Thank you, Dr. Esther Baker. I will tend to keep my comments short this evening as well, but I would like to say that as, as a father with one graduate of West Villarreal City Schools and one student that is a current student in West Villarreal City Schools, I want to thank those who have come to speak and share with us this evening, as well as those that have spoken at previous board meetings regarding the issues of sexual assault, of hazing and inappropriate behavior that has taken place in some of our locations, some of our buildings, and some of our events. I want to thank the community members that have pulled me aside, and we've had conversations. And we are asking the same question, and that question is, why is this happening? And so, in, in order to try and find an answer to that question, I've begun, we have begun, because, because for me, the first step has been to educate myself on how the process works. I can't offer fixes to a process that I'm not sure myself exactly how it works. And so for me, this has been an educational process in exactly how we handle these situations. And to be honest, the, the, the more, more questions I ask, the deeper I get into it, the more, the more, the more challenging, I guess is the word, just not challenging, more complicated, I see how that process is, because go into, into the process is due process. We have to make sure that all parties involved experience due process, and to prevent us from a rush to judgment. And so I know it might not look like anything's happening, but that there is a process that's underway to put together, okay, what does that process look like? And to make that information not just available to me or to members of the board, but also to the community, so that as community members, you too can look and see and begin to understand how the process works. And once we see what we have, the next step then becomes, okay, so what do we, what do we want to have put in place? What's the ideal look like? And then we can sit, or we can lay next to each other, what we have versus where we want to be, and then work at that point to make the necessary changes and adjustments. And so we're working at that process. Just, I would want the community to know, I think we all would want the community to know, that we are not just sitting on our hands, not doing anything, but there is work that is taking place to remedy not just the situations that are transpiring right now, but to prevent these kinds of situations as best we can from happening in the future, and to keep our schools, make our schools a safe place for all of our students. So I want to thank our speakers that came on. I also wanted to thank the members of the, of our administration and our teachers and instructors, the members of our custodial staff, the members of our nursing staff. I had an opportunity, real quick, just had an opportunity to talk for a few minutes with one of our head custodians about the load that's on them to keep our buildings up and going, as well as available for community members to make use of. I just wanted to check in with and make sure that they are able to keep up with the load, and if there's anything that we can do to help. And so just want to take a moment to, to thank those members of the staff, excuse me, that very often go unnoticed and unrecognized. So I want to thank them for all of their hard work and dedication this evening as well. And so I figured I'll be outside there. Anything else? Okay? Moving on to agenda, I have fourteen time dates and locations of the next meeting. Agenda fourteen point zero one, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, October the eleventh, twenty twenty-one, at six o'clock PM at the Early Learning Center, nine thirty-six East Wind Drive, West Villarreal High. As a reminder, space will be limited to fifteen people who comply with health and safety protocols based on CEC guidelines. Mass will be required, and social distancing will be observed. Moving on to agenda item fifteen, adjourned, and please have a motion in a second. A discussion? Ms. Marshall, would you please call the board?
Ms. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bayson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Esther Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes. And with that, we are adjourned.